... board, you'll rise to the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Gray.
Here.
Holston.
Run.
Horn.
Here.
I understand trustee Pop will not be here. Trustee Raisig.
Brother Gonzalez.
Here.
Okay, I believe you've passed a fiddle, so you're gonna give the implications.
Dear lordly, thank you for the nation and for the community in which we live and for the freedom that we can have and also to live in a just and fair society and we pray, Lord, that it may become more so. We ask Father that you as the Lord of all authority and power will help the trustees and mayor and all who are involved in this meeting to realize again their authority comes from you and we thank you as the God of wisdom that you also promised to guide and to help make good decisions. We thank you that as the God of justice and truth you promise to guide us in our search for truth and as the God of love, we thank you that we have opportunities to be a blessing to others. We pray, Lord, that this meeting tonight will indeed be a blessing to this community that we love, to the citizens of Moni. We pray, Lord, that justice in dealing with budgetary matters and honesty and transparency, that various other decisions made regarding the running of this community and its public affairs may be done in a way that's pleasing to you and enriches this community and organizes in a way that helps the people to prosper and to flourish. Bless, Lord, each person here who's involved in leadership. Thank you, Lord, for the time that they give and the attention they give to these matters and bless them, Lord, each, their families and their loved ones and guide them in your ways for Jesus' sake. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Fuddus. I entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2015 budget.
So moved.
Okay, Gonzalez and Holston. Roll call please.
Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Raisig.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Gray.
Yes.
Okay, for the presentation of the budget. Our finance director was not able to make it this evening. He had a very, very unexpected death in his family. And so suffice to say, we've had a couple of meetings pertaining to this. Larry, help me out on this. We've had a couple of meetings building up towards this. There's been much discussion, perhaps item by item, in many cases, on the line items. We are very pleased that we have a balanced budget to present to the public. It's been available for the public to review for the last couple of weeks as required by statute and I'm not sure if there's any particular thing. I'm not sure, I mean, it's been available for review, so I'm not real sure. We don't need to go through item by item specifically.
No, sir. All we have to do, your honor, is that it's available for public inspection. It has been in accordance with law. We did publish the notice of the public hearing tonight after the board approves it. If they do approve it, then we have to file it to Will County. But like the mayor indicated, we've probably had three meetings to go over each department and the appropriate allocation for each line item. At this point in time, the public, if they have any comments about the public, about the agenda or the budget, they have the right to make their comments.
So unless any of the trustees have anything to say pertaining to the budget itself, I will move on to public comment. If anybody from the public has any comments they'd like to make regarding the fiscal year 2015 budget. Okay. Based on no comment, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Horn.
Second.
And Gray. Roll call please.
Trustee Horn.
Yes.
Raisig.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
And Holston.
Yes.
At this point in the agenda, this is our standard, open to the public, agenda item zoning. If you have any comments, come forward, give your name and address. Okay, no takers. Item G, consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
So moved.
Second.
Horn and Holston. Roll call please.
Trustee Raisig.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, do you have something to report?
Your honor, we got a letter from the Knights of Columbus, council 11232, for their annual drive to raise money for intellectually disabled. They're looking to sell Tootsie Rolls in the village September 19th through Sunday to 21st in their usual spots and be contacting businesses to help them as well. And the deputy clerk and I have contacted them as well to qualify what they do with their money.
Sure.
So we should be getting something short there.
That's fine. Do we need a resolution to, or is it a motion to the board?
Motion.
Okay, we don't need a...
No, sir.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the Knights of Columbus to have their annual Tootsie Roll Drive. Raisig and Holston. Roll call please.
Trustee Raisig.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
And Horn.
Yes.
In your packet, you should have a resolution that was prepared having to do with the realignment, the STP. Mr. Crizell, I believe that's the STP funds is the reference to that, where we have to have that in order to proceed with the Will County partnership and the grant money and everything. We talked about this, I believe, at the last meeting as a, kind of preliminary. This has to do with the possibility of the realignment of Hamilton and Cleveland.
It's written in the standard WCGL format and it does not reflect the state funding. Is confirmed for the project, it just basically states that the funding will be reflected in the actual agreement once it's put into place and approved by the board for each phase of progress.
This is a significant project that was all but lost four or five years ago and all, something like that. And anything we can do to get the state to help us fix this traffic problem we have up there would be wonderful. So I entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Right, as soon as I get a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Gonzalez and Holston, resolution number?
2014-8, your honor.
2014-8. Roll call please.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
And Raisig.
Yes.
Okay. Officials report. Item J, 1, Public Works. Mr. Gray.
I have no report tonight.
That's fine. Did I miss something? J1, Public Works. We just did that. That's fine. All right. Trustee Gonzalez.
Just really quickly, Parks and Rec, I just wanted to thank everybody. Obviously, last, well, almost two weeks ago now, we had a very successful, I think, in my humble opinion, a successful kids' day again. We estimated at like the prime time in the afternoon, there was about 400 kids there with their families and things and we couldn't, I know, we had a rain delay for one day and I think the village did a fabulous job in getting the word out and they made an excellent decision in doing it on Sunday. We could have asked for a better weather day and everything went off, I think, without any hitch at all. I know it was like drop back 10 and punt for some of the volunteers and things, but again, the volunteers threw, you know, come through in a pinch. All the ones that could, or could make it Saturday and couldn't Sunday, we traded with the ones that couldn't make it Saturday and could make it on Sunday. So we still, in essence, had about 40 volunteers, including most of us here too. So thank you again and I know Ms. Habe did a wonderful job and Jill Bonnema did some great pictures and my sons are famous now too in getting watermelon eaten. So thank you again to everybody for that. So I can't wait frankly for Fall Fest now too.
Yep, that was a great event and thank you to everybody who participated in that. I just want to, if I can, just for a minute here. We oftentimes take for granted the things that we don't notice. I was very impressed with, especially at Public Works amongst, you know, as usual, but in the sense that there were times when I turned around and I saw something that wasn't being used anymore, it already had been put away. And we had just the DJ and his leadership with the volunteers that he was working with and everything else as well. Very impressive. And even trustee Horn decided to take a plunge and sit in the, endure the dunk tank for a while. So I cheated, of course, just to be clear. I couldn't hit the broadside of a barn door with a baseball, but I did bump it with my shoulder.
Is that what happened?
Yeah. Anyhow, number three, business development.
No report.
Okay, number four, finance.
First of all, it's great to be back among you and I don't have a report either because of, precisely because of a family emergency of our finance director. So I hope to get up to speed with him for next, the next meeting.
Thank you. Number five, building department. I believe Mr. Pop is out with a slight injury as well. I don't know, DJ, do you know, do we have anything much to state regarding code enforcement building department at this time? I know that we are working on Larry, found a couple of nuances with the grass ordinance that we had, we're needing to adjust and we'll have that perhaps at the next meeting, I think, or... I thought you... I know, I looked at it, I just wasn't...
Oh, I'll get right up to my...
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. That's fine. And number six, public safety. Mr. Raisig.
This is the EMA training that went on last Thursday?
No, I'll go for it.
EMA was holding up a field training exercise last Thursday on the corner of Court Street and the Cool Center Road, teaching their, EMA people how to direct traffic in a state of emergency. Let that police.
And next, lead of the meeting, I guess, comes over the attorney.
Yes, sir.
I have three items for the board's consideration, your honor. The first item is the approval of the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year 2015. We had, obviously, we had the hearing earlier tonight. The ordinance now is up for the board's review and consideration.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the appropriation ordinance for the budget for fiscal year 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Holston and Raisig. I need an ordinance number for that.
1688...
Yes, sir.
Many changes from the one that we approved at the last meeting.
All the changes that you had requested have been implemented in the one that was posted. You know, it's been made publicly.
The only changes that went on were the requests.
Yes. Roll call please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Raisig.
Yes.
And Gonzalez.
Yes.
Number two, sir.
Thank you, mayor. The next item is an approval of a map amendment and special use ordinance for Budrec truck lines. The gentlemen are here tonight from Budrec. They came into the zoning board last Wednesday. They're looking to buy a certain piece of property in the village. They've asked the ordinance to reflect M1, I believe, zoning. Light industrial, thank you, and also that they're asking for a special use permit to allow outside storage. The zoning board heard their presentation through their attorneys and the applicants. They did indicate they would be in favor of a special use permit and the zoning map amendment. I sent a copy of the ordinance to their council. Their council asked for one minor change, just the heading showing that they are getting the, sorry, that they are receiving the map amendment and also the special use permit for outside storage. They are here tonight in case there's any presentation, but the zoning board voted at least for nothing in favor of their proposal.
And just so everybody's aware of this, the property that they were looking at, it's approximately 70 acres. There's a significant portion of that that's ended up being not as useful as we originally even speculated. Ends up, there's, wasn't on any of our maps that we had, but there's an ICor line that runs diagonal through the property. They have since diligently, expediently dealt with their designers and staff and they have figured out a way to still facilitate the building as expected. It's just gonna have to be pushed further south on the same parcel, which is gonna limit the value of the land itself there, but that is what they're intending to do. So they're still endeavoring to move forward with what was presented to the PMZ. It's just gonna consume more real estate of that, which would have allowed for other future developers, but they're not gonna have now. And this is, just to make sure everybody's aware of this, I think we mentioned this at a previous meeting, but they are currently in another town. They purchased land in another nearby town that ended up not panning out so well for various reasons. They were frustrated, ready to move to Indiana with their operations. We were able, through collaborative effort, reach out to them and secure the opportunity for them to consider Moni as a viable option. And there, this truly does fit the description of a blighted area, if you will, in the sense of a Tiff district, you know, the Tiff development area where it's, it's got a few nicknames in that particular area, which they're aware of. This would be a good development for us. We've just lost a couple of businesses over the last two or three years. This would bring 60 jobs approximately initially, 47, 48,000 square foot ability, with a potential of doubling that, all within the space of the original plan I'm using. So I entertain a motion to approve the amendment, or the ordinance for the special use and map amendment.
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Gonzalez, second from Raisig. Roll call please.
Trustee Horn.
Yes.
Raisig.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Order's number?
1689.
Raisig.
Yes.
Gonzalez. Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
1689.
Yes.
Thank you, your honor. And the last item for the board's consideration, board recalls, we pass an ordinance like that. We amended the grass cutting ordinance roughly a year ago. What we're attempting to do is cut some of our costs and expenses, though we're gonna attempt to, if someone is not adhering to the statute at the very beginning, lean it for the entire season. I forgot, it's about $200 per 10,000 square feet of real estate. That's what our charge is. It will give that person, or bank for that matter, some incentive to get the grass cut. Then at that time, when they pay everything in full, the village will have the right to release the lien. We do give them notice prior to a lien being established. The homeowner and/or bank might have some concerns because we're leaning for the entire season, even though at one time they might be delinquent one time, but what we do, we reduce the amount of lien accordingly. So they pay what they're supposed to pay, we'll give them credit for it. But it appears as though we do have some vacant homes or property not being kept up. You lean the property, they'll take care of that and then you can release the lien, but that's the only way you're gonna get your, some of your costs and expenses reimbursed.
The other factor is on this, and I'll just interject here if I may, is that it becomes burdensome for code enforcement, for Public Works, et cetera, to have to wait until it becomes a nuisance in appearance. They have to go out and keep re-inspecting and re-inspecting. It makes it much more predictable and it makes it much more neighborly, if you will, so that those properties that are in violation are, once they're put on the list, we don't have to keep re-inspecting, we would merely cut them along with what we do all of our other properties that we're dealing with, for municipal and properties and such, until such time as they would clear their outstanding debt with us. And so, any discussion, any thought on this at all? It's just an easier way for us to budget for personnel and minimize the burden on our code enforcement.
I'm just prepared to, to similar villages in the area.
I believe, trustee Holston, some villages will lean for the one-time occasion. What we're attempting to do here is lean for the entire season. They'll get a proper credit for it at the time when they pay that bill. What we're attempting to do is avoid leaning every time and avoid re-inspection cost. So we'll lean it. Usually the bank will get notice of it, that usually it's not paying the bill, that at that point in time, they'll probably make, I would think, accommodations for the village to pay the bill in full and then we'll release the lien.
How many properties do we have now that are falling under this?
Fluctuates because we don't have a, we don't have a consistent...
This fall part, 20. And any more here at the time. And that's being very conservative, low conservative. We're already at our seventh block list for the season, eighth block list for the season.
This would, this would simplify that significantly because as, as something gets put on the list, it gets put on the list until they come in and settle up their bill and clear that up and that makes it a lot easier for Public Works to anticipate scheduling part-timers, whatever else to be involved in the lawn maintenance or even outsourcing if we need to.
So how are we gonna communicate this to the public when we do this? How are they gonna know the first time it happens?
Well, if they get a warning, they always get a warning first.
Right.
And code enforcement will cite them with a warning. They have five days to correct the situation from the warning. I mean, this is currently the standard practice and it stipulated in here what some of the methods of communication would be, but code enforcement would go out, notify the person, you're in violation, you got five days to correct it. And that's not just gonna say, you know, you're three inches over, that's when they're already at that excessive level where typically somebody's already been complaining besides, you know, it unfortunately goes eight, 10 inches, whatever, sometimes, and it's very unsightly, you've gone to seed and what ended up happening, happened is sometimes the neighbors end up coming and there's a liability encounter for them. But anyhow, going back to the communication, they're notified by a warning. The warning will then be followed up by an actual re-inspection at that time, verified that it was or was not cut. If it wasn't cut after the warning, then...
I understand that's how we do it now, but if we're gonna put a lien on somebody's property, as a property, where I would wanna know that and I would be very upset if I didn't know that happened, because it's, it'll be hard for something like this for people to be aware of this. Is there a way that we can do that?
We typically, this will give us a provision in here that, we give them 20 days to kind of settle up from the time it's cut, the first time. Once it's, according to this provision here, we typically wouldn't even engage the lien for at least 30 days from the time it was cut, just to give a little bit of grace in there, that's just an internal mechanism. Reality is, is we don't wanna be sending our personnel over to Will County all the time either or having to engage a lawyer unnecessarily.
Let's take me for example, I'll be the bad person who didn't cut my yard.
Okay.
So you come over and you knock on my door and I don't answer, you leave a sticker that says five days and I don't answer because I'm out of town, so now you come out and you mow my yard. Now what happens?
Chances are for it to have gotten to the point where you were warned in the first place, it would have gone two or three weeks at the very least.
So I think what trustee Holston is trying to...
So you would have been gone a month before that would have even been the case.
I think what trustee Holston is trying to say is when they go over there to issue the warning, we should also put a note on there, if you don't cut it, not only will you get a ticket, but you're going to, your property is going to be leaned for $200.
We can modify, we can modify the warning if you do.
That's all I'm saying, is I think we ought to give them that warning because otherwise that can be a misunderstanding.
Yeah.
That becomes a little bit...
Okay.
It's a good incentive for them to do it, which is what we want.
Yeah, well, and that's the whole thing.
We're not in business to cut the law, frankly.
Yeah, if you're, you say that you're gonna put a lien on their house, guess what's gonna happen, they'll cut it.
Mow your house or we're gonna do it, put a lien on your house.
Right, so...
But then on that first notice, they've been notified, otherwise you'd get called some...
A lot of these pertain to poor homes, homes, banks owned homes. The provision that we're trying to do is to notify them the first time and not have to notify them again after that.
And I'm on board with that, but I'm just thinking, when you do that the first time, if you also put on there a notice that says, "We will put a lien on your house."
Correct. According to ordinance number, you know, according to ordinance number 1690, your house will be leaned.
That way they've been fair warned because one of the complaints I hear from people are that we don't tell when you said...
Exactly.
And I'm all for doing it one time. I'm all for taking action right then, but I also wanna make sure we give them fair notice.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those good, good comments. We'll make sure that the warnings have, and if we could... Yeah, and if we could, at the time at which it's actually cut after the warning, let's also attach a, that same kind of a reminder that they have, that their property has been fined and leaned for $70 a month. If they wanna resolve this quickly...
Well, I don't...
I'm saying it will be leaned for $70 a month for the season and if they wanna, if they wanna bypass the lien process and all the other encumbrances, they need to kind of set up within 20 days. You know, according to the ordinance, just find some way that we can...
And I would suggest perhaps even on the website and a Facebook page, that notice of these two new ordinances are in there and they should be read.
Two new ordinances? Which two?
One we just passed.
Appropriations and this one.
Facebook and what, please?
I'm sorry.
What was the other ones?
The appropriations one and this one.
Oh, no, you said Facebook.
The website and the Facebook page notify folks that we have two new ordinances that should be read.
Okay.
Need a motion?
I need a motion to approve the, do we already have a motion?
No. I'll make that motion.
Okay. Holston, Raisig.
Trustee Gonzalez already got the number of 1690.
She's good.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Roll call please.
Trustee Raisig.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
And Horn.
Yes.
That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. I don't believe we have anything in our new business at this time. Open to the public, non-agenda items?
Could I bring up?
Yeah, I'm sorry, here, by my own means.
Yeah, and I, and I guess it's a simple thing, but two, I just wanted to make folks aware too, we were talking about the Cremoni School District, just so everybody knows that we do have now a new teacher contract, we do now have a new superintendent as a, but we, in the meantime, our high school principal has resigned, so we're still looking for a lot of positions to be filled. And then on a lighter note, the Education Foundation is hosting the third annual Mark Rose Memorial Golf Outing on August 9th at Lincoln Oaks Golf Course and it's a fundraiser just for athletic scholarships for Cremoni athletic students. So if anybody's interested first in golfing, to have perhaps be whole sponsors or to register for some, you know, I'd be happy to talk to them after the meeting. And just as a reminder too, that the village was good enough to be whole sponsors last year too.
And if anybody likes drama, if they have a little girl like I do and I got, I got to go to the preview last night of Cinderella at the Cremoni High School Theater and if anybody's interested in attending that, it was, my daughter was delighted. Of course, she wanted to sit right in the very front and she got to see the fairy godmother walk right past her, she, her eyes lit up, anyhow. So that's going on through the end of this week.
It's Saturday too, so this is part of the summer enrichment program, so these are all students and ex-students in the drama and the summer enrichment. So these are all students and ex-students in the drama and the summer enrichment program. And it's grown from literally seven students to this hundred, this year, almost 100 students participating in this summer program. So it's grown fabulously now.
Pretty impressive to see.
It's very impressive.
Okay, anything else under new business?
I just want to make it aware, this Sunday, the morning volunteer fire department has hosted a blood drive. The fireman's parked in the building, the bathing room, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Where is it? I'm sorry.
Fireman's parked in the, oh, the bathing room. And they're hosting it through Lifesource this time. And Lifesource is asking you to make an appointment if you can beforehand. So I guess we can go through there. You can make your appointment at lifesource.org, or call that 1-877-543-3768. And it's this Sunday from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Sunday or Saturday?
Sunday.
I believe the reason for that is there's an emergency in the area right now, there's short blood, so they're trying to have a special drive to, because we were contacted as well, trying to have a special drive to catch up to the blood bank right now.
Can I give them some confirmation? Okay, I just want to confirm, thank you. All right, anything else? Thank you. Anything else? Open to the public? Sorry about the delay. We get, get so excited about moving forward, we forget what we...
Dorothy Marra, 27253 South Timber Lane, Moonee. I was just wondering whether anyone could, could give details about the circus that's coming to town. It sounds like a lot of fun.
I'll do, I'll do my best. Here's going to be lions, and tigers, and elephants, oh my. And in spite of some of the concern, to the best of my knowledge, there is no, no animals are being abused in the presentation of the circus. So come out and enjoy. It'll be fun. It'll be at 4:30, at 7:30 on the twenty...
Seven.
Seventh?
Seven.
I'm sorry, DJ, what? I, I don't need to sign on me for a little, sorry. What is it?
It's on the Wednesday during our board meeting.
Well, our board meeting's going to be on Tuesday.
Yeah, it's 27.
Yeah, that's already been, just a reminder, our board meeting's moving to Tuesday, so all the clients can be present at the...
Board, hey.
I'm talking about myself too. Anyhow, so there's the showtimes at 4:30 and 7:30, but there's going to be, I believe at 9:00 AM, there's going to be when they start to put the tent up and everything else, where anybody who's interested wants to have a little field trip excursion, see how they do all that. You can see how they put the whole circus together, and they're in one day and out, out the same day, pretty much. So there's information available on the website. It's not a whole lot of information yet, but I know they have it canvassed, they've reached out to some local businesses, getting flyers put up and everything, so I can't remember the last time I've been to a circus, so this should be interesting for me as well. So, thank you.